I'm going to call on the board of the Silver Lake Community School Committee meeting for March 17th, St. Patrick's Day. I would like to open it up to anyone from the public that would like to voice their committee. If so, if you could raise your hand and when acknowledged, state your name and what town you're from and go right ahead.
Do you want me to stand up or down?
If you could, you don't have to stand, but your voice might carry better.
Yeah.
Okay.
Janet Stanford, what else, the street?
What town?
Oh, Kingston.
Kingston.
Sorry.
Welcome Janet.
Okay. I have a little bit of a speech. I know I only have two to five minutes, but I'll try to make it quick. Can everyone hear me?
Very well.
Okay, I'll talk louder. Just a little nervous.
You don't mind?
Okay. There's a lot of people in the room. Okay, so this is about the book. This is far from the, now I can't remember the name, I'm so nervous.
So far from that bamboo row.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so this all started when another mom made a post on our class Facebook page advising us to look into the book. So I questioned my daughter and she showed me the pages. She was upset. I'm not going to say too much about that because she's middle school, privacy, she doesn't even want me being here. So I read the pages and excerpts that were the troubling ones, I'm going to read them quickly in case, I don't know if everyone has read the book by now. So the excerpts that bothered me and her were, you know, in quotes, "I saw several Korean men dragging girls into the vicarage. I saw one man raping a young girl." Then there's another one. "At a small stream, I stopped to drink and I heard a cry. In the woods was a Korean man on top of a girl. She was kicking wildly and screaming." And then there was another excerpt that, I don't have quotes, but it referred to a young woman screaming for help after being, oh gosh, seized by four men. So this is what bothered me that night and, you know, this was like eight o'clock at night. No warning from a teacher that there might be something disturbing that my daughter would read. So I was pretty upset. My daughter was upset. What bothered me that night and to this day, besides the inappropriateness of this material, oh, no prior warning, okay, I already said that. And there was no option to read an alternative book either. You know, nothing came home saying there'd be a book with sexual content in it and, you know, if you want to choose to have, you know, your child read an alternate book, there was nothing about that. Okay. When I reached out to the teacher, that was also disturbing. She didn't express any concern for my daughter. She talked about the book being an award-winning book, used for many years, and also used by many schools. Okay, that might all be true, but that didn't address me being upset or my daughter being upset. I was very disappointed in that response. It was like she just sort of defended the book, basically. I don't even know if the teacher's in the room. I don't remember reading, meeting this teacher. She might be here, she might not. I have nothing against her, but I did not like her response. At that point, I think I called Mr. DuPio and then somehow the ELA instructor, ELA coordinator called him. I talked to her. I didn't think that conversation went very well. She at first seemed sympathetic and again, I don't know if she's in the room, but she talked to me and she was, again, defending the book, award-winning book, you know, used by many schools. That still didn't address my concern for my own daughter, so I was disappointed in that. I had a better conversation with Mr. DuPio. He was more sympathetic. He was more, seemed a little bit more concerned about my daughter, wasn't defending the book. He was more empathetic. But I will say, out of everybody, not one of them said that my daughter could go see the guidance counselor. I used to be a guidance counselor 20 years ago, elementary and middle school level. Okay? And I think it would have been appropriate for someone to have said, "Would your daughter like to speak to the guidance counselor, school adjustment counselor?" That never happened until I spoke to the assistant vice principal, I mean, assistant superintendent. And I told him my concerns. I told, when I told him no one had suggested going to the guidance counselor, the next thing I know, after that conversation, maybe later that day, I don't know if it was a few minutes, no, I'm sorry, my daughter came home that day and said she was called down to guidance. So at least the assistant superintendent, you know, he did something about it. I don't think my daughter said much, so if anyone is going to say my daughter didn't seem upset, please don't say that. My daughter's very shy. She didn't really want to go to guidance, so I don't know what she said or didn't say. She might not have said how upset she really was. So I hope, and based on confidentiality, I hope there's no one here or at that book review committee that said my daughter wasn't upset. Okay, I'll try to wrap this up, but I still have a little bit more. Okay, I understand that not every student's going to be upset by the book, but some may. And the mother who posted, I had asked her to come here a few weeks ago when it was supposed to be on the 10th, and she said the damage is already done. Damage? You're educators. You're not supposed to be damaging the kids, okay? And I have another daughter, twins, so she supposedly should be reading the book in April. I'm not going to allow that, but even if she wasn't, even if I didn't have another daughter, I would still be here because I am concerned about kids. I am a therapist. I work with children and adults. But, you know, I started out as a guidance counselor, so I feel like I should be here regardless of whether or not my daughter's going to read this book. Okay. Hold on a minute, I'm trying to speed this up. Oh, just another issue is, I asked to be on that review committee. I wasn't allowed to be. That was very disappointing to me because I probably would have more to say. Just in general, I feel like as a society, we're kind of, we've become kind of numb to things. We watch the news, we see reports of people being stabbed, being shot, you know, dying in fires, car accidents. You know, we watch the news and we read it on, you know, our Facebook pages and then we go on with our day. And I feel like the way this book was handled was similar, like, read these pages and then kind of keep on going. It's like, again, no prior warning. I don't believe a guidance counselor or adjustment counselor was going to address the children the next day to talk about what they had just read. So I feel like this was just mishandled all over the place, that the children were just like, "Here, read about this," and that's it. Like, it's nothing. I don't think it was nothing to these people in Korea that were experiencing this. So that's about it. And I really do believe this book should be raised to a different level. If it's award-winning, that's great. If it's about history and this woman's account, that's great. If the speaker comes to school, that's great. I have no problem with any of that. I'm not for banning books. But I think it should be at a higher level. Some of these kids are just 12 years old still. You know, some of these kids haven't even gone through puberty yet. I don't know why they're reading about sexual assaults. In this day and age when it's supposed to be social-emotional learning and there's nothing wrapped around reading this book to address these assaults, I think, I think that's another reason, I just don't think, you know, I don't want to keep on pointing to the teacher, but I just don't think it was handled well and I think it should be moved to the high school level. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. We will be addressing this a little bit later in the agenda.
I saw that. I don't know if I should stay or go, but I'll see how quickly the rest of your meeting goes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Prove the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes from our regular session February 10, 2022. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Leslie, did you abstain? We don't have masks on now, but we can still give you a little wave. That's okay. Moving on, principles reports. Mr. DuPio.
Yes, so I'd just like to start to talk about our grade six parent orientation. So that happened on Tuesday night. We had a full auditorium for the event. We discussed courses, curriculum, events, clubs, community, and Silver Lake and how we all come together. And it's really an opportunity for our students to meet and greet. We even talked about Step Up Day and being the first part of that day, students from other towns and really become part of the Silver Lake family. It's kind of an exciting night. Jason was there as a dad, so he participated that night. And Michaela was there as a mom, so she was participating that night. So thank you guys for coming. I hope you enjoyed the night. I'd like to move on and talk about Junior District Music Festival. So this past weekend, 12 of our chorus students were selected by audition to participate in the music festival, which is held in Situate on Friday and Saturday. And then the concert was performed for families and community on Saturday afternoon. It was an honor for our group to be part of that and participate and have that, I think, this weekend, this past weekend, it was this past weekend. Another thing I want to talk about that I'm excited about is that we've been working on a tutoring program after school. So we have high school students now coming over to the middle school, participating in one-on-one tutoring to help our students, some of our students, struggling students, which we have some this year especially. And it's with the honor society from the high school and that has started up and we're already starting to see some benefits from that. In fact, the first girl that came over was Mia DuPio, so she's been helping out. My poor kids, I always was like, "Hey, this is a great idea. I need you to come over. Let's get this thing rolling." But I do want to thank Anthony Weber and the High School Honor Society. What a wonderful thing to come and give back to the younger kids in our Silver Lake Middle School.
And would it be a good way to get some volunteer hours accomplished as well?
Yep, absolutely. So it's a great program. It's off and running. Very excited about that. Coming up, one event that we have coming up is our March Madness. So on March 21st to the 25th, we have our Spirit Week. Then on that Friday, we will have our pep rally. I'm being told that the pep rally's going to bring down the house, that it's going to be an exciting event, so stay tuned for that. And then we have our March Madness that night, starting with our Student Faculty Game, Dance, other games that we'll be playing that night, Zumba. It's going to be an exciting event and that will be on the 25th. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Janet.
All right. Hello, everyone. Good evening. Tomorrow is our third Annual Credit for Life Fair. We're really excited to have the event in person again. It was the last thing we did as a school before we shut down in 2020. And then last year, it was all virtual, so the event has now grown over the last couple of years, so the entire junior class will be attending tomorrow, which we're pretty excited about. So we have sort of a flipped day for them. Half the class will attend workshops in the morning and then do the Credit for Life Fair in the afternoon, and then they'll swap the rotation there. I'd really like to extend a huge appreciation to our advisors for Credit for Life, Leslie Kalanowski, Casey Sheehan, and Kevin Sawyer, as well as our math department for their support in pulling this off. It'll be a day-long field trip for the students. They'll come down for an introductory and opening ceremony of sorts. They'll go to the fair and or the workshops. And they'll have an opportunity to meet volunteers from our community as well and local business sponsors as they make their way through the fair, learning about what it's like to experience and make real-life financial decisions and how to balance a budget, things like that. So it's an exciting opportunity for them. Financially, it's been made possible through a grant that we received through the state, a School to Careers Connecting Activities grant, as well as a generous grant that was, we applied for through Cape Cod Five Bank. So thanks to them, we're able to supply all the students with portfolios and financial books and resources, and there's lots of prizes throughout the day, spinning the wheel of success, if you will, for them. So we're excited for that. We're also excited to introduce the Unified Sports here at Silver Lake, so in partnership with our Best Buddies Program and Special Olympics. We kicked off the celebration of this two weeks ago with our Inclusion Week. There's a different theme each day to sort of celebrate united sports, kindness, unity, and inclusion. We'll start off with a track season this year, so students will be paired with their best buddy and be able to participate together. And then next fall and winter, we'll have a basketball season as well. And so since this is the inaugural year and the requirements are a lot less than our full-blown athletic programs, it's sort of a truncated sport season, if you will, I am asking that the committee consider waiving the athletic user fee of $300 for the inaugural season, which would include our track and basketball seasons while we work to build the program.
Okay, would that be for both, you know, the students who are participating and their buddies who are supporting?
Yes. Yep. And again, this is all volunteer program. The coaches volunteer. The students, who are the buddies, are volunteering their time as well.
Now, Chair, I have a motion that we waive the fees for the inaugural seasons for both of those schools.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing that, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. In terms of school and staff updates, it's March Madness week. I think Callie's going to talk a little bit about that, right? So I'm not going to steal too much of her thunder, but it was exciting to see some different type of themed days this week. But that's why we're all dressed down and we had some bizarre ones, but they were fun. They were fun. MCAS season begins next week with our ELA tests kicking off on Tuesday and Wednesday. We'll have math in May, science in June, so we'll be communicating with our families in preparation for that with the annual reminders of not bringing your cell phones and whatnot and eating a nice big breakfast. We also serve free breakfasts here at the school, so students have access to that in the morning before testing. Last week, I think, it's all a blur now, last week, we welcomed the class of 2026 for our curriculum night. We welcomed parents and families and caretakers to learn a little bit more about our curriculum and sort of kicked off course selection season. So we're really excited about that. Our CT admissions deadline is coming up, April 1st. As of right now, almost 50% of our current eighth grade class has applied to CTE. So it's, I think it's a testament to just how great our programs are and how wonderful of a job our teachers in CTE are doing. And maybe also a shameless plug that we may need to add to our programs down the road. So I don't envy the selection committee's job over these next couple of weeks as they select candidates for CTE. On Monday, we had our winter awards ceremony and officially ended our sports season. And now we're getting ready to kick off spring next week with tryouts. And then I'm going to now turn it over to Callie, who is our student council representative with us this week for some more student life updates.
I have my notes on here. I'm a senior in high school. I just wanted to talk about a couple of things that are happening at the lake. One of them was the Inclusion Week that we had two weeks ago now, and I thought that went very well. I saw a lot of students dressing up on those days. We're wrapping up winter sports and having the banquet, the teams are having their individual banquets. There is a mural elective, which has started this year and last year.
Couple of years ago.
And they're painting on the walls now and it's very nice to look at and see in the mornings. Graduation's coming up and the seniors are starting to get ready for their final end-of-the-year events. Progress reports were sent out the 2nd of March. The mask optional after break has been going very smoothly, in my opinion, with the option to wear it or not. I've seen people still wearing it and not still wearing it. And the people that do don't get criticism for it, which I know wasn't worried. The weekly communication from Ms. Gill has been very helpful to keep everyone, students and families, updated on the current events. And the March Madness Spirit Week this week has been going great. We've had a bit of unconventional days, but I feel like that's also helped because some of them were easier than ones in the past, so it made everyone participate more.
Great. Good job, Callie. Any questions?
I don't know if it's to you. I don't know who it's to. Well, just when you always mention that 50% of the eighth grade apply, I was wondering, how does it work? So if there's a selection process for the CTE program and a student is not selected into the CTE program, are they then allowed to apply to a different vocational program in another community because we aren't offering them seats? Or are they, like, could they go to South Shore Botec or go to Plymouth as a choice if we don't, if we did not consider expanding programs to accommodate the number of students who wanted to apply? Could that be something that happened?
Excellent question.
I wouldn't want this. I was wondering, like, thinking forward in our future planning, like, would they be allowed? I know they can't apply if we offer a program, they traditionally would not be able to go to South Shore Botec for that same program, but if we offered and denied them a seat in it, then they...
That is a possibility.
Okay. They can reapply the call of duty.
Yep, correct. Correct. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
You can also still take electives in that CTE program and not reform any role, correct?
We do have some electors in the CTE program, yes. Not every shop does, but yeah.
Callie, I just wanted to mention, you delivered your report very, very well, very well spoken. Can I ask you, a senior, what are your plans?
I'm committed to University of South Florida for Mechanical Engineering.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Best of luck with it.
Very excited. Thank you.
What is our normal application rate for CTE for our seniors?
I don't have the number off the top of my head, but it's not 50%. I think usually we're turning away very few students. We saw our numbers go up a little bit last year. We thought last year was our highest year to date, but already this year is going to be even more. And unfortunately, because our class sizes are restricted, right, due to safety, our spots are limited, so...
Is this an out of health or is it just...
I think that has certainly helped the program to grow, but I think also we've done a really good job of building all of our programs and I think the stigma, I think maybe that in the past has been associated with career tech, has, we've done a really good job of trying to overcome that. So they're very popular.
When Elliot comes out every year and says the graduation to job place ratios has been achieved year after year with these programs, I wonder if there's a relationship to, to, to go on to college versus not. Having all the things that I believe in is it's more important to develop skill than it is necessarily that skills are a part of us. Your degrees are not necessarily, so it's interesting. I'm just wondering if it's a contrived problem or not, but it's interesting.
It's a good problem to have, right?
Both of my sons went through the CTE program. The automotive, they both went on for mechanical engineering degrees as well, so...
And there's increased number of code boot camps, micrograduations, and other things like that to help abbey the cost of higher education programs like this. Seeing it's really challenging. Just one other comment, Callie. I think it's great that you're going into mechanical engineering. I'm an engineer and there's not enough women, but the fact that you can speak so well and clearly, you're going to do, you're going to do great.
Thank you.
Not many engineers do communication, so...
Pretty serious.
All right. Thank you all.
Okay, moving on to Christine.
Thank you very much. Today, I'm just going to review quickly the financial to kind of bring you up to speed on where we are right now. The budget has been able to sustain what we need to take care of so far during this year and it will continue to do so through the end of the year. There were just some areas where we are showing some signs of wear and I just wanted to, I kind of put them into a handful of categories. I have a, there are a handful of deficits within the budget that total maybe $5,700 of deficits that will surely be absorbed within their areas in the budget. Utility area, we do have one account that has a $17,000 deficit in the gas account. And I had mentioned previously that based on last year's actual, that's what we, that was our estimate who we were going to land, and as we get through the year, we make adjustments based on what we're seeing happening this year, so it's not just information from last year. I'm reluctant to really decrease that yet until I can see the balance of the winter bills, because we don't have all of our bills through, through to this time of the year. It's not only the utility we're waiting on, it's also the suppliers, such as separate companies. We're waiting for that to come through. But I expect that next month that will be reduced because it's not quite as, not quite as desperate situation we thought it would be. Maintenance is always an area where we start to see deficits. Maintenance takes care of everything that happens that goes wrong in our buildings, our fields, our grounds, so there's always something new that we can take care of the coast of there. Next area I wanted to mention is our property and casualty insurance. There is a deficit there. There are a few factors. Recently, we had a reevaluation of our facilities, so that increased the value of what we do have here. And then in addition, I used to make, take advantage of the discounts they offered for early payment or timely payments. The discounts have gone from 4% and 5% to 2%, so that has been reduced. I just want to see if there's, I thought I had one more reason why that happened. Oh, another reason is I'm trying to make sure that everything that we have has been insured. Like, for instance, the garages that were built, you know, so we haven't gone outside to purchase those, but I want to make sure those are covered under our policy in case anything should ever happen to them. So I've made a real effort to make sure I've included all the property and equipment that we have here. The other area that we have a deficit is the special education transportation. We have talked about that previously. That has outpaced the increase in the budget, but I have, I'm confident that all these areas will be absorbed within the budget, that we'll be, we will have sufficient funds to get through to the end of the year. Right now, what I'm kind of switching my focus to see where we are and where do I expect we're going to be. Talking to all the principals, all the department heads to make sure that we have all those items purchased that we expected to purchase. Are there any of the needs that we have that haven't been taken care of yet? A little better, a more precise picture of where we'll be for the end of the year. So unless you have any questions, that's it for me for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Ryan?
Thank you. For the curriculum instruction and assessment update, since we last met, we had our second full-day professional development PD that occurs during the school year. That was February 28th. Focus for that day was social-emotional learning and also included anti-bias training. And that was the morning portion for the secondary level, included the anti-bias training. And then in the afternoon, teachers met in smaller groups to continue to review the student survey data and also worked together on some small group scenarios related to anti-bias and promoting inclusion. Staff were surveyed after the day and 85% responded favorably to the anti-bias training, scoring at a one or two on a four-point scale, and 42% of staff rated the training as highly effective. So that was good that teachers feel like the professional development that was provided met their needs. We had another half-day professional development day on March 9th. The focus for that day was making progress toward our goal of a standards-aligned secondary curriculum. And we focused on continuing the progress from the November 2nd professional development day. Teachers were able to work by department or team with Edu Planet, our curriculum mapping software. So staff really appreciate the opportunity, just be able to work together, to collaborate. That time is rare, appreciated, and was used valuably. And finally, there's one more opportunity for secondary staff to work with Kelly Mertens, a consultant who works with inclusion practices, effective inclusion practices for special education staff and regular education staff. She will be working, meeting in small groups for teachers who identified that they'd like to work together to ask her questions in a small group format. So that's a need that's been identified by teachers and we're happy to provide that during the school year to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all students. That's the portion of the agenda that relates to curriculum assessment and instruction, if anybody has any questions. Great, thank you. The second component under Assistant Superintendent says review committee discussion and recommendation with the vote. So the review committee for the grade seven text, we met last, two weeks ago. The committee was comprised of 11 members, including the ELA coordinator, the school adjustment counselor at the middle school... the school adjustment counselor at the middle school, the middle school principal, three members of the school committee, a middle school parent, a 7th grade ELA teacher, an 8th grade teacher, we had a librarian, we had an 8th grade student, and we followed the process of looking at, we discussed a little bit about, we had an hour, so we did a little bit of a crash course on where curriculum comes from, how teachers work to align materials with the state standards, and a little bit of, participants were provided with an overview of how the grade 7 unit works. And the review committee was aiming for consensus, which is something where people agree that everybody can sort of live with the outcome. I would say that, from my perspective as a person who participated in the committee, it was a collaborative, positive meeting where there were good questions, people had an opportunity to ask questions and share from many different perspectives, so we valued participation and everyone's voice being heard. And based on that meeting, there are three recommendations that the committee agreed on. Number one, the review committee reached a unanimous consensus that so far from the Bamboo Grove is an appropriate instructional resource for the 7th grade ELA curriculum. The review committee recommends that teachers continue to communicate with parents about instructional goals and the content being used in class. And the review committee reminds families that an alternate text can be offered to a student if needed, per the district policy IJR. So we appreciate the involvement of the members of the committee, and this is the recommendation that the review committee would like to make to the, the school committee.
Any questions, discussions? Anybody on the committee want to add anything to the line of share?
I can add comments. I would say, by and large, the biggest part of the discussion was about, was acknowledgement of the fact that the book had incidents that could potentially be triggering for sensitive students, or students who have suffered traumas, or other things like that, that we could not easily project. But it was certainly a parent's right to be, have an opportunity to review ahead of time what was going to be read, shared, discussed, and things like that, be able to seek out alternatives, and for students to have an opportunity to meet with adjustment counselors if, if they had not been prepared for it, or been surprised by any content for this episode. So it was, I would, I would say probably morality of the time is not one of the other. And I think that's, there, the, the incidents in the book are sophisticated, and it is a sophisticated, challenging set of topics that the book raises, and it's very understandable what the concern would be, and it's acknowledged that are very well understood. So through all the measures we have, we felt, like Brian said, that it was appropriate for the curriculum, that it was appropriate for the age level, that students are often observing very challenging things, especially like the views that we're seeing every day, and that the kids will be able to talk, and stuff like that, and watching those ones unfold. But it's, I, it didn't say, we, the recommendation, one of, one of the very clear things that is said is that we're not going to get into the business of telling teachers how to communicate with the families, and articulate various challenges they have, and, you know, grapple with some of these issues, but there was a renewed clear message, communicate, communicate, and do that with a better opportunity.
So I just have a quick question. I asked all, four of my kids, because they all read it, and I asked them if they had any recollection, and obviously, it's been a few years since they read it, but they all said it was a great book, that they got feeling, that it was very positive, they didn't remember, I mean, I mean, they remembered the issues being discussed, medical problems with that. I wasn't aware of it at the time, and I guess my question is, and you sort of touched on about communicating, I know we have the alternative text that could be available, but like, clearly, in the case of this parent, she, she didn't know what the material was going to contain. Do, do we have, and I know you said you can't dictate what's communicated, but in something like this where it is more sophisticated topics, do we have some sort of defined communication to let parents know that there are some topics in here that could be triggering the view, or not to read it, or the alternatives? Because in this case, it sounds like she didn't know that.
I, I can tell you what we talked about, I think if you go through, going down to, we discussed, first of all, are there any state standards around, you know, what would, what would rise to a threshold, like, problematic? And, you know, the book definitely hit anything that would be considered a state standard, even then, there's not exactly, there's no, there's no, like, MPAA of the state that says, if you show this, then you have to send out some help. The teachers articulated that they all had different methods of communicating, in part because of the different experiences they've had with parents. So you have teachers who will send advanced messages, you have other teachers who will at open house nights lay out all the books and say, you know, here are the two books, or the three books, or whatever, that we're going to focus on, pick these up, take a look at, and come up on, you know, and so, so it kind of depended on the teacher and their experiences, and their experiences with what messages really get through. So we did not get to any sort of point where we said, okay, if you, if you have a book that you think has, or might be, you felt was questionable content, you should go somewhere. We did not get to that point in part, because it was very, it would have been very difficult to establish, and when we skirted around that issue, my sense was that it would be difficult to establish what is that standard that triggers some kind of, like, warning or alarm or something. So most teachers felt like that they're accomplishing that by either being clear in syllabus, or clear in open houses, or clear in parent square communications, or other things like that. What is it they're doing, and giving you freedom to, you know, take feedback, and that's what, we did have the adjustment counselor, who said, you know, this is part of the reason that here, having new students who have, you know, reactions to something, so that pertains to this particular book, I mean, perhaps, which was, it was an interesting discussion, so it's interesting to hear what her experience was in relation to that, or, he stated, I think it's wrong. Brian, I'm going to add that.
You touched on the topics that were discussed, and I tried to capture that, as the person who organized the committee, by the second recommendation, which is that teachers communicate with parents about instructional goals and the content, and that you had said earlier, communicate, 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 that when, when parents know beforehand what the instructional goals are, and also the content, as much as we can, that, that's the best practice, and then they can, if it's the choice of the parent that an alternate be used, then they would have that opportunity to make that decision. So that was just a little bit about where that, the wording of the, the recommendation came from.
So maybe just taking this up a couple of thousand feet to maybe 15,000 feet, you know, there, before we went 1-to-1, 7 through 12 with our technology, there were, and probably still are to some extent, a whole host of arrived ways the teachers communicate with not only the students, but the parents about a whole host of issues. And I said for a while that it would be nice if some of that, some, either the platform or the method or whatever was somewhat standardized, kind of have somewhat solved that with a 1-to-1, it got better, but, and it just seems to me this is an opportunity in every course to at least lay out the syllabus with the instructional goals and the content for every class, so that the student gets it at the beginning of the year, and the parents can get it, if they go back to school night, it's posted somewhere, so there isn't sort of this ex post facto situation where they find out about it after the fact, I'm not suggesting we change anything that we teach or the way we teach it, but it just seems to me in general, this is an opportunity to say, okay, generally syllabi should be given out at the beginning of each course, period, and it should include the instructional goals and what's going to be covered, and, and the methods and tools that some teachers do that just as a matter of course, and some don't. So I'm just thinking that this is a good time to consider that as a recommendation to you and Joe on how to look forward. Nothing to do with this particular book, but will, it would answer, one of the parents concerns, they don't want it until after the fact, and, you know, do you want to know if they're going to be taught trigonometry some year? I don't know, but you should know if there was modules or interact class that semester or that session in general. So just a thought from my perspective, and maybe a little higher level than this particular book.
I was just, do we, do we need to vote, we're not changing anything?
Do we vote for all of this? It's the next day.
I can't. So, in accordance with the statement of philosophy, no question material shall be removed from the school pending a final decision, pending the outcome of the request for reconsideration. Access to the question material can be denied to students of the parent's guardians making the complaint if they so desire. If the decision of the school committee is that the question material resource be retained, the district is not required to, to convene a review committee relative to the same complaint for a period of three years. If substantially different point of view is advanced, it will be investigated, and the period of three years does not apply. So it appears that the school committee determines whether or not you're going to retain the material.
Okay, so we should, we should vote?
Yes.
It'd be cleaner. Do I have a motion? Can you restate the recommendation that's in the motion?
Maintain the book that's appropriate to the college. I'll be the one. Again?
Chris. Can you second it?
Sure.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan, for taking that one on. Yes?
I would just like to add a comment as a past middle school student who has done that. I think the book was well communicated with my mother, this is just from a personal perspective, I don't know who the teacher was at this time now, at the time it was Ms. Lewis. It was communicated before we started the book that there was going to be sensitive topics in the name of the book for the parent to do their own research, and I also thought that it was handled very well within the class structure. Like, I never personally felt uncomfortable while reading it, because it was handled so well.
Thank you, that was wonderful feedback. Thank you, Sharon.
Same teacher, same thing.
Okay.
Just in case there was a curiosity.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay.
I would just say too, to Mrs. Stanford, who spoke earlier, that we appreciate parents reading the instructional materials as, and sharing ways, their, the reaction to it, and ways in which for us to think about and make sure that we're meeting the needs of all students. So I just would like to say that, that the school, she identified several people that she spoke with, and we appreciate parents reading the materials and sharing, that's their experience, and that it helps us to make sure that we're trying to meet the needs of all students. So I just wanted to thank parents and families who do that.
Agreed. Thank you.
So Paul, just a quick comment. So, and I'm sure that Ms. Farrar will attest to this, but I, all the way through high school, would ask her, okay, so what are the kids reading this year? Because I would companion her.
Yes.
It gave me an opening to a bunch of books I would probably never read, and so I really enjoyed that.
Has to lie.
Thank you. Okay. The superintendent, the board of directors.
Thank you, I didn't know if you wanted to get, to handle the flyer that we received under the chairman's correspondence, or if you wanted me to ask the committee to, you know?
No, you can be, yeah.
Okay. So in your fly, in your packet, you'll find a flyer from Silver Lake Youth Cheer. They are part of the recreation department, and they would like this registration flyer sent out to our middle school students, so you put it in the packet for your review.
And is this, do we generally send anything like this out, and was this going to be posted in buses?
So, the bus company is completely separate, and we don't have, that wouldn't go through us, as to whether or not it's posted in a bus, but generally speaking, notices from the rec department are pretty common for the elementary schools. It's a fairly common occurrence. This, we don't typically get a lot of requests from the rec department, this is so...
Sometimes we'll get, can you make this accessible?
Right.
Can you put it in the office, can you make it accessible? We don't normally get a request to, like, send something else.
Disseminate it to everybody.
No.
So this, this is just a flyer that they would be responsible to provide.
Okay. And then physically, the flyer would go out to the students?
At the, at the elementary schools, I can only speak to how they do it at the elementary schools, that the, the organization provides them, and then the teachers send them homework backpacks, which is, it's a different...
They come in the homework folder.
Right. So it's a little bit different for the middle school, so I would defer to Jim as to what the best method would be for, for his grade level, because it's, you know...
Yeah, I mean, it's whatever, obviously, whatever the committee decides, but we could make it accessible by having it in the lunchroom, and we can make an announcement and say, if you are interested, please go over to the table. We do that for other things. We could also have some in the main office, and have it accessible there as well. That, that would be more to the norm of something that we would do, but, you know, obviously, whatever you guys decide is what we'll take care of.
I know we have high school cheer, we got middle school cheer at all, and is that on your list of added activities that you mentioned two months ago, or new sports? It's also a big conflict what we're doing, I guess.
So it was, it was not, we do not, and it was not one of them. I mean, it was, we're, we're looking at other sports that other middle schools do around us, like the Cleveland schools, things like that, which they added, you know, volleyball, lacrosse, baseball, some have football, those, those...
Yeah, but you're saying, activities that basically extend down, like you're saying, would just be one of them?
I mean, it could eventually, I would like to see the middle school expand, and really create multiple opportunities for our students, and I think our communities want that too. I've certainly heard, I've heard that multiple times now, sometimes in the grocery store, but multiple times, it's, oh, you know, and I'm 100% agreement, and I know that Lieutenant is interested in that as well, so...
So I'll make a motion to be approved of the distribution of this flyer in the middle school, and ask that we're, Silver Lake Youth Cheer provide printed copies to the middle school, and then distribute it at your discussion.
Second. Anything for the discussion? So you're not, all those in favor? I'm going to stay.
I'm going to post.
You're going to post them?
Oh, that's all.
Okay, so the, the next item, I just want to, you may have noticed the parent square that went out around February 27th, the CDC announced that masks are no longer required on buses, and in your package, you will see version 2 of the budget, and you will also see a presentation, and you will also see a summary of assessment changes that Christine has also compiled. So what I'd like to look at first is kind of a summary through the presentation, which if we were in a large group room, they would put up for you, but you do have the slides in your packet. in your packet. So I want to point out to you what the actual changes are in the budget that's in your packet right now that's labeled version two. So per your request, we added the shared costs that were voted at the joint committee meeting. We took a deduction, an E-rate deduction that we can use towards Chromebooks. We have a middle school leave of absence, which will lead to a one-year leave replacement, which will be about $40,000 in savings. We reduced the middle school textbook line by $5,000 by using ESAR funds. Mass Municipal Health Group is at 3%, not 5%, savings or reduction of $58,000. We added in $35,000 because we had a rescinded middle school retirement. But we were able to reduce the budget by $55,000 by savings that will be realized by two high school retirements. So the budget in front of you, since the last time you looked at this, is a net change increase of $2,000 from the last budget version. The total budget is an increase of 3.74%, an increase of $1,020,066 more than last year. With that said, we have some items that we would like to discuss with you for consideration. We would like to propose a number of budget adjustments that we introduced the last time we met. We proposed a number of reductions to fund curriculum coordinators from seven through 12. We had some discussion in the joint meeting about the possibility for our arts coordinator to be K through 12. For this proposal, it would be a seventh, because this is Silverlake, you would only be considering whether or not you wanted to move forward with an arts position for seven through 12. We are concerned about our music program and its continuation and the need to offer instrumental lessons at the elementary level. That does not look likely for two of our schools this year, but we continue to examine possibilities for our students. This is, the curriculum coordinators for the remaining subject areas that we discussed last time remain our top priority. We have met as a central office team and with our building principals, and this is our number one priority. We would like to restore the high school assistant principal to 12 months, and we've listed ways that we could make the difference in the budget to the right. We would like a behaviorist at the middle school, and originally we had proposed a potential staffing reduction. However, we worked together as a team to consider other ways that we could fund this position. And what we would do is that we would take .8 FTE from two different special education revolving accounts because of the students that would be serviced through this position. But .2 FTE, I'm sorry, .4 FTE would be from the local budget, which is about $24,000. So I want to make sure I. Point eight FTE, .8 is coming from the revolving accounts. .2 FTE is coming from local. That's for the behaviorist, for the new TLC that Marie had presented in her budget presentation. Originally, that was going to be a revolving account item. So instead of that being solely a revolving account item, we decided to take these two positions. .8 from each of these positions would come from revolving account. .2 from each of these positions would come from local. For a total of .4 FTE coming from the local budget, which is an increase of $24,000. If you look at tier three, there are a number of possible reductions that are prioritized there that would help to make up this difference. Other proposed budget adjustments is a.
I'm sorry. Can I just have a question that is your tier one? Is that possible? So, I don't even know if I read this correctly, but the curriculum coordinators and the 12-month assistant principal adjustments. It seems to me that most of the way that you're reaching your reduction are one-time savings. So, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but so for instance, the wall lines of display, the treadmill, stair climb, those are all one-time adjustments and these are somewhat perpetual increases? So I'm just either A, pointing that out, or it would be, just want you to confirm that because, I mean, certainly we could take away the working for theirs, or we could take away the 12-month back to 10-month, but that's not my intention. My intention is to fund this in perpetuity in general. But I'm just a little concerned that the reductions that you're listing are one-time costs versus revolve, are costs that are happening every year. Fish.
In some cases, yes. Yes. That's correct.
And clarify for the curriculum coordinator, if the art curriculum coordinator, how do we go? Like originally, there were four proposals, there was the art, social studies, special ed, and world language.
Yes.
So you're just talking about an art seven to 12?
Yes. At this, in this proposal, this proposal would only get you a seven through 12 arts coordinator.
I think, so this, the $12,275 covers all four coordinators, but not a K through 12 coordinator?
Right.
It's $12,000 for four people.
But it's only seven to 12. So it costs $3,000 per coordinator?
On average, yes.
On average?
Mm-hmm.
$3,000 per, okay. I missed that, I thought it was $12,000 per coordinator.
And can I ask a question about the behavioralist? It's a net neutral there.
The behaviorist would be coming from a revolving account. It would be $24,000 additional, so we would have to take from these tier three reductions.
Okay.
That we listed here and we prioritize them.
Okay.
With the top being the first item we would reduce from.
What revolving account?
So we have programs that are tuition-based.
Okay, so from one of those, okay, that makes sense. That, okay, there's symmetry there, okay. I think a revolving account is a vote act, but I'm getting that. A world revolving account.
That's right. So it'd be a shared resource.
And the behaviorist was also a recommendation from an outside review of the programs and potential needs.
Okay, gotcha. Let me circle back to the curriculum coordinator. I'm sorry, I'm super. I lost. The preliminary budget that you gave into us, it said to go from the department headed coordinator was $15,000 each. So now it's only $3,000 each.
Yeah, so that number was inaccurate.
Okay.
Yep.
And we are only hiring within, there's no risk that we're going to have to, because originally the conversation was like, if we post this and the person is currently department head, I'm going to do it, and I'll be hiring a new person and cutting. Is that conversations on the table or this is just?
That conversation has to be on the table because, one, the position has not been posted. Two, we have to interview, we don't know who will apply and whether or not they'll be certified. So we do know that we have candidates in several, in most areas that are already certified who applies and how that process works. That's a process that's handled by, that will be a committee because it's a shared Silverlake position. So I would anticipate that it would include the building principals, it would include representatives, it would entail a committee to make a final decision as to who fills the position. But yes, if someone came from outside, it could be an additional cost, which we highlighted last time in our previous presentation.
So is it possible for us to approve the $12,000 increase? And if you are unable to fill the position using that amount, then the position remains just a.
We just go.
So what happens if the budget just goes over if you can't fill it and have the hires?
It could, it could potentially result in cutting a staff member.
And again, I just want to emphasize the importance of aligning our curriculum pre-K through 12. And I know we're just talking about secondary right now, but the standards have been around since the 1990s. And we need an articulated guaranteed curriculum that provides grade level material for all students and ensures that they have access to that curriculum. And this is not something that can be done quickly. There have been great strides made in departments, but again, we need something across all of our subject matter and all of our departments. Curriculum development is an important priority for us and the achievement of our students.
Just as a practical example of that, so on the March 9th Professional Development Day with teachers working by department and team, you're a social studies teacher, a world language teacher, fine and performing arts teacher at the middle school. There's not the same level of coordination that would be experienced by the math teachers at the middle school, the science teachers at the middle school, and the ELA teachers who have, and health and wellness with the benefit of the seven through 12 coordination. So I think that's just a practical example of the leadership impact that we see in the potential of these positions.
We can always go back to Lisa.
Any other question? Your total dollar amount with the 3.74% increase is already taken into account that you're making these budget adjustments?
So if this is net neutral, there would be no impact to the total dollar amount, but there would be changes to the line items if in fact this is the direction you want us to go.
That first page.
Or both the top and bottom?
So tier one would be, these are the reductions that we would make and these are the additions.
But those are not done yet in this budget?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Just the first page, we note that there were virtually two changes. Those are the items that are included in this budget.
Then there was my clumsy explanation of the tier, the behaviorist funding, because I had forgotten to mention that there were two behaviorist positions here that we were parsing out and funding through different mechanisms. Then there's tier two of our prioritized requests and ways that we could reach that amount, $100 over. We didn't bother to go back and deduct the $100. And then there's tier three to make up the difference for that behaviorist and/or any other needs that the committee thinks is appropriate. We wanted to be ready with a menu as a request.
These items in tier three are currently in our budget here in this budget. They haven't been cut out yet.
The items on the right-hand side, correct, are still in the budget, yes.
No, tier three is on the right-hand side though.
Tier three is currently in the budget.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you wanted to take them away, you would have to.
But what you do need to do is take $24,000 somewhere at tier three.
If we're going to move forward with the behaviorist.
Right. And can I just, I think we absolutely definitely need to move forward with any of our spending. That's super important. And so we're choosing, it would be a big move coming up from sixth grade and everything that's going to happen. What we definitely go with, I think this is super important to have those positions. But then, do we need, we don't need to vote on which items here need to be cut from tier three, correct? We just need to.
We're just looking for direction. So again, and we want it to be as transparent as possible because we know that these are important decisions. So we got together and did our best to try to find a way to make these needs a reality.
Well, I think the question is, of these items in tier three that you're saying are proposed cuts, do you need to add $24,000 to the overall budget number that you presented us and not make any cuts? So I guess my question to you all is, do you, we made a ton of cuts a couple of years ago when those started, and I don't always want to just cut. So do you need that $24,000 or are there items in tier three that we can live with out? And when I ask that question, remember, and I know when we cut maintenance, we don't spend money on certain things one year, it's, we're not saving money because we're going to spend more down the road for these things. Textbooks is another prime example. Those don't get cheaper, they're going to go up with inflation and everything else, so.
So the items in yellow too, last time I had presented as just a $2,000, I think I think you presented it as a $2,000 middle school reduction, when actually it should have been parsed out, 1,000 middle school, 2,000 high school. That's why it's highlighted there in yellow. That's a change from last time.
I think the last time we did talk about this and you said the PD, the high school and middle school PD, 2,500 each was not going to be a big hurt to remove those.
We, I guess the way I would put it is that we see other needs that are a priority. It's not so much that they, again, I want to, in the original presentation, maintenance of the field went up by how much, Christine?
5%.
Just 5% for maintenance of the fields?
Each of those maintenance accounts went up 5% in the first version, yes.
But I know we made cuts there.
Previously.
Previously. And again, it doesn't help.
I'm lost again, apologies. The behavior exposition, so there's one up here and it says one full-time staff reduction would happen, but then down here, there's two separate ones, but no one has a full-time staff reduction. So we're saying.
My explanation is this is what was originally presented to you and this is how we would propose funding the behaviorist instead.
Instead, okay, thank you, sorry. I missed that one.
No, I'm glad you questioned it because if it's not clear, I don't want to mislead, so thank you.
So you'd like to not see us do?
Well, I'm saying why, I don't like cutting, we just went through that. You know, $24,000 we need to add back into the budget. These are things that are going to cause problems, like cutting them. I don't like that idea. I mean, health insurance estimate, I think obviously that's a given, right?
That's already in there.
Well, I've reduced the amount of the increase based on Mayflower and the municipal's vote. This just works with the methodology that I use because I assume X number of people may switch from an individual to a family plan, yeah. So we could make that adjustment, and you're right, that would not.
Just harm.
Harm.
Do we offer like teachers incentives for not selecting health insurance? Like some schools will say, you get $3,000 if you don't choose our health insurance. Do we do that or is that?
The current.
I'm confident that though.
The current teacher contract does offer that option.
Yeah, I agree with all that, basically. So my inclination when I'm saying is I don't want to cut anything that's going to hurt. I prefer to add, we were talking about $24,000 when I was talking about $6,000 and coming in at 3.74. You know, the assessments are 5.2 to Halvedex, 2.4 to Kase, minus seven difference. So in case this difference doesn't affect a lot, you know, $24,000, we're talking about adding, if we probably, taking the health insurance estimate at 16. So does that mean that the only thing is to look at 8,000?
Right.
So I'm saying add 8,000 to the budget instead of cutting another 8. That's almost seven.
Right. That's it, we're all in agreement that the 3.74 is.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right, because we're not, and yet I mean, we may cut some for these, so I agree.
Can you walk me through, I know for a long time we've been wanting. Can you walk me through, I know for a long time we've been wanting to do the grades of K through 12 curriculum coordination. Could you just re-educate me on, we have K through 12 curriculum coordination on ELA only?
We have one coordinator.
Right.
Who divides her time between our elementary schools and has been working over the past several years to make sure that all of our elementary schools have consistent materials and textbooks and professional development and focusing on instructional practices that are effective. That one person has participated in UBD, takes a leadership, has taken a leadership role with A group. Our principals take leadership roles with groups because we don't have K through 12 So again, she's also the Title I coordinator, so she also works on Title I program in each of our elementary buildings as well. So for example, she spearheaded textbook examination and committees that reviewed them, provided, you know, worked with teachers to help evaluate them and then worked with teachers and principals to help and assistant superintendent to provide professional development moving forward with regards to those adoptions and changes. So she's done a lot of work to make sure that all of our schools have access to quality materials and also providing professional development for particular areas as she goes along. So she has done work with math, she's done work in science, she's done work at ELA. Those have been her primary focus areas, but she's just one person.
And she's K through six.
Yeah, K through six.
Right. Oh, she's K through six, so our conversation does not impact...
No, I mean, she works with other coordinators to make sure that there's communication along with the assistant superintendent, along with principals, along with me, to make sure that we're, we have an elementary leadership team, we have a secondary leadership team which includes coordinators. Then we have, we also have an administrative leadership team, which is all of the principals. Our elementary and secondary leadership teams include the assistant principals to help coordinate and make sure that there's communication and articulation, particularly with regards to curriculum instruction. And that is, and will continue to be our focus. So much of our day has been taken up with management and issues related to COVID and we have persevered and continued to keep the spotlight on taking steps to improve instruction and to improve our curricular development efforts. So, because we see it as a priority.
Which I completely agree with you, I mean, I've been on the Dan Wright, I've been for a long time on it. So what have been ones that are proposed before disciplinary is that are proposed, or you're proposing just for grades 7 through 12?
Yes.
Is that a budgetary constraint? Is it down the question?
To go, to go K through 12?
Yes.
Yes, I...
Would that be the ultimate goal, I guess is the question?
In the area of the arts, I think that that definitely would be ideal because we're looking at, we need, we need that kind of organization. Eventually, I would like to see that position go from 7 through 12 to a K through 12 because we, we need to work on saving music. We, we need to save music. It's a reality. And we need, the only way we can do that is by being like other elementary schools in our state and in our area who offer instrumental lessons by grade five. When you take away instrumental lessons in grade five, your pool of students who are going to be interested in middle school and high school shrinks considerably.
How does the impact on my children make to tell you that?
And that's a wonderful opportunity at the secondary level for many students to feel a sense of connection and a sense of belonging and a passion for them. But it also speaks to the need to arts curricular articulation as well. So again, it's a great opportunity for that person also to provide leadership for the fine, the fine arts and making sure that that curriculum is also developed and articulated in all of our elementary schools right up through high school and improving our program there as well. But again, my not-so-secret mission is my concern about, about music. And it's a sincere one.
I was thinking, I remember you also speaking about a special education position, the same kind of concept, but particularly around the ELL. I know like in Kingston, that's very significant for our region or our town increase in ELL students in the elementary school right now. So thinking forward two or three years as they're beginning to age into the intermediate and middle and high schools.
We may need additional ELL teachers at the secondary level. Right now, Kingston has worked into their budget an additional ELL teacher and we have coordinated with our elementary schools to continue to provide services to both Denet and Halifax that would be reimbursed to the town of Kingston for those additional services, but those numbers in those communities are still very small and it would be difficult to obtain that kind of FTE, part-time positions in that area. So we, you know, we feel fortunate that we were able to come up with a budget in Kingston and coordinate with the elementary schools in a way that will allow us to enhance and to improve our services to ELL students in all of our elementary schools. But you're right, that number could find its way here at the secondary level and we may need additional staffing eventually in ELL in particular. We had talked about the possibility of that. You know, if that's the case, perhaps considering that the world language would encompass more at that time, if that becomes a necessity, a way of expanding that, that role and that oversight as opposed to an additional staff person as a possibility. But again, it was more of a brainstorming and an idea kind of session than anything concrete with regards to K through 12. In any of these, obviously, you know, it would be a larger cost if you go K through 12. And so we're, we're trying to be thoughtful and address the areas that we can at this time and address the needs, but also with an eye towards the future and some of the issues that you bring up like the ELL is going to be a potential need. And we know that the arts articulation and saving programs in our arts program is on our doorstep. It's already here.
I also, I very much agree with trying to save the music and I feel like as a person who did do music when it's younger, I know that it doesn't only help learning music, but it also helped learning in general. It helped like problem-solving wise and it was very challenging and it aided in me being able to learn other subjects. So I feel like that is a very important thing to keep in the school system.
Thank you. I appreciate your support.
I was just kidding, I've got the same thing. My experience that I found out was math, you're excited, oh my math features were musicians. It was just such a crossover. So I definitely agree. But you know, if anybody wants to see music and what it can really do, come to the Thanksgiving game between Siloil and the halftime show is always phenomenal. The Siloil parents are here and the number of, and our folks too, the size of their band, their program, it's like four times the size of ours. It's really outstanding. And I was on the elementary school committee many years ago when we cut music and cut art and cut gym. We were hurting really bad when we had to make these cuts. People were begging us not to, but we didn't have a choice. And it's really unfortunate that we weren't able to find a way that they could go. And I really regret that, although, you know, looking back, I don't know that we had any other option. But I definitely agree. But if you ever come to Thanksgiving, come, come watch the game. It's always fun to watch the game, but the show is great too.
So just sort of, I have, I heard back on most everything he said, so, but I heard the earlier comment about the not cutting because we've been cutting for so much, for so long. And this, talking about music is a decade or more at this point. So if I understand, again, correct me if I'm wrong, it says here on your front page, the total budget is an increase of 3.74%. Before we consider what you have in here for tier one, for tier two, and tier three. And my math buddy next to me calculated that's $748,000 of add, is that correct?
That's the total, well, it's cut in place, it lives in the add, it's like four, it's just cut the cuts.
But if you don't do the cuts?
If you don't do the cuts, correct.
If you don't do any cuts, they add what you want?
Tier one, tier two.
And tier one, tier two, not considering the reductions in tier three. It's 148,000, is that right, Christine?
I had not double-checked that. Thank you.
I need to know it's already there.
This one you should run again.
Twenty-four, they've already sort of acknowledged with 4 FTE.
So I guess my question is, what does that make the overall increase? Just to say we...
Yeah, or...
Yeah, what do we get? 3.74, do we go to 3.9, 4.2, like what do we get?
I can let you know that.
I'm just curious. I know you two behind me are going to have a heart attack.
They're behaving.
No, I understand, my heart attack, no, Halifax card was over here. We, well, the shares we give is, it's going to be up. So I just want to, I just want to know for full transparency, what, if we didn't cut anything, we added these things?
I added 4.2, but I don't know if it's right now.
If we didn't cut anything and added each of these separate increases that we're looking at, what would that be? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay.
I added 148,000.
I added 148,000 and I added 4.2.
Well, I have a follow-up question to that is...
Oh, no, right ahead. Okay, wait, I gotta wait for Christine. And still doing the behaviorists where it's shared between revolving in the budget?
So what I did was I just added 148,000 to 28, to 66, to 44,000.
Can I feel the steam?
I know, I feel like...
You can all stand behind me.
That would be much better. Just want to make sure I give it all.
I have to say, well, I'll do a little conversation.
Say, talk amongst yourselves?
I just want to thank the team, the principals and the central office staff for coming together to try to think of creative ways to try to make some positive changes without, without trying to push the budget over the edge. And again, it's...
I'm on the edge.
It's, you know, it's a, we put a lot of thought and effort into thinking about what the best way to approach these items would be. And so that's why we're...
She'll locks us in her office for hours at a time and doesn't let us, doesn't give us food or water.
Very great, well, that will do it.
Windows full.
We're highly motivated.
You've certainly gone to a very granular and thoughtful level. After Christine Shiz's memory, I do want to explore something from...
Do we stall some more?
I know. I have 4.068 for increase.
Sorry, do that again?
4.068, but I'm only adding back 64,000 because that's, okay, 63.
I added 64, 352, but then you got 2.148, so I added...
I added 64, 352 plus the 24 and then I come up with an increase of 4.08%, 4.068%.
When's the last time we had a budget increase of 4% for the towns? I wonder when was the last time that we ever given the town a 4% increase of 4%?
I do not recall off the top of my head. Unfortunately, the information's in our system switches from budget to actual, so I can't go back to each year to find that. I can try to look through my files here and see if I can find the increase.
No, but I didn't know you just...
No, I don't reach, I don't know that, sorry.
I was just going to ask, dumb question, but you just bringing up the point of inflation. Or, I don't know if you can foresee this, but is inflation going to completely blow us away? I mean, I guess you...
We have some things that are constant that we know the exact amount, but there are other things that we just, you know, we have energy contracts for our gas and electricity, but that only guarantees the supply. The delivery, I don't really have an impact on how that changes, so we just try to manage that within the, within the categories. Our insurance rate is set for the year, our contracts are set for the year, but there are many things that aren't.
I'm going to ask a question nobody minds. Moving to tier four, what caught my eye in our material? I'd like to explore what it would look like if we didn't replace the two retirements. That's a, that's a big amount.
That's a big, big detriment to us.
Really?
Yep. You're looking at increased class sizes, more students in directed studies who wouldn't have a full schedule.
Do you elaborate on two, two of the topics we have? Is this something specific is the problem?
Well, if you're looking at retirements, right, we only have a certain number this year, right? So if you're looking to retain staff without losing a person, you're limited to where you wouldn't fill retirements at. And so that's why you would see a big impact.
Okay.
So yes, it's a cost savings, but...
It's a cost savings. It's also, you know, if, and I realize towns are in different positions, but God knows where any of us will be next year. It's more palatable to not replace people retiring than it would be to cut actively teaching staff. And my mind goes there as well, you know, it's...
We discussed topics there, I thought, which subject would be, I mean, if you're a specific, the one Latin teacher, for example, would be a problem maybe on...
Well, I think our retirements are public, but I don't want to speak to what would be cut.
No, I'm more wondering, I was trying to get around what you said in terms of the staff we have, how two teachers can be so detrimental to the entire...
So if you think about one teacher, right, if you think about one teacher, they have five sections.
Yeah.
Say 25 kids in each section, quick math, that's...
145.
Thank you. Right, so 125 students. So with just one, if you're looking at two, you're now looking at 250 places for students to go on our schedule.
Yeah.
And that's 20% of our school. That math I know.
Have A class potentially impacted because five math classes now even pull it...
Right, so if, well, if you want to use math as an example, right? So if we don't have five sections of math?
Right.
We now have to place those 125 to 150 students somewhere else.
Yeah.
So if I'm the math teacher that retires and is not replaced, Mr. DePille is there, his class sizes are now going up, or in the electives that we were running, we can no longer run because we have to run another section of geometry or algebra or calculus, whatever it is, to meet the grad requirements.
Okay, that's a renewed schedule now.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun.
It's something fun. I have, there's a question on that. Oh, your question, I'll probably do so. Is we've had decline in clockry enrollment in the last 70 years, what's a decade? I don't know if it's continuing that trend, but if we need to add, you know, some behaviorists or, or the number's 140, you're shut out, that's recurring expense that we're showing offsets to fixed expenses that are non-recurring. So next year, we should pick off that added salary. We're not going to pick up this year, but next year it's going to be in that baseline salary increase on top of, you know, both everything else. So it'll be almost more challenging, there's like more in the wage side of the equation here. And with declining enrollment to that point, I'm wondering if you have some courses that need to be trimmed versus like, I think you should add a class to the school committee, maybe several. So it's like, yeah, I'm trying to figure out the balance, is 18 or 20 the right number in size or do we need to concede to offer, what we need to offer and have... and size, or do we need to concede to offer, what we need to offer and have drinking order and adds like that to their salary, you can be, you know, quote, "polish them." And that's probably a guess, which she wants to say, usually adding and enhancing, but I don't know enough fan honestly of these tier one and two.
Offsets for...
Because the repair is going to, you know, spend 12,000 on treadmill and stair coner at some point, which is just a deferred expense, but the assistant principal is going to be here herself. And I remember we're never, never going to cut that, that's the thing from 12,000. It's just not going to come to us, it's not going to come to us to do that in minutia of trying to, you know, get 12,000 out of the budget. So I think when I see ads that are developing what the administration needs, but I'm struggling with that mind of 80 whatever percent being staffing and fixed costs, we just don't have any, I'm in the capital plan, so you know what I think. This 24 fixed costs of teach materials and so, they'll come back to us. These displays are not just going to disappear and wreck themselves. So I have some issues with responding to these funding.
So as Herb stated earlier, we vote a number, we vote bottom line. I came in here tonight prepared to support the 3.74%, you know, and we've added some, and we're talking about potentially cutting two positions from my school. And I understand the thought and the effort that's being put into this, you know, and I'm coordinating with the sustainability of bringing together 4% and then build off of that next year. At the same time, I think everyone heard me at the last meeting saying, I'm not willing to cut from our kids and from our program and what was proposed in the 3.74, but I understand ultimately the superintendent is entrusted to use those dollars as she sees most wise for our students and our programs here at Silver Lake. So I would just, I want you to think about the sustainability aspect of it. I also want you to think about the political capital aspect of this, going to town with the number above the four, which I had never anticipated before. It would not have much of an impact on my town, as you've noted, I believe, negative impact. But next year, will that have a negative impact to the larger class size that's coming in from the mountain? What's my assessment on that next year? And I think we need to remember, you know, this year's Halifax is right, next year could be case of our problems is right, and we still need to be physically responsible with that ultimately, not, not just the assessment to our town. So I am willing to make the motion at this point to support the 3.74% overall increase in the Silver Lake budget.
Can I just discuss a little further? So this committee obviously does not have a permit for Halifax, but I think we need to get real, real clear on what's actually going to shake out with just 144. And I don't know if it's okay or not to ask Mr. Anderson to say, but if I recall my figures correctly, I think we're going to be $500,000 over budget. We're going to go to town meeting with a budget that looks like this. To Jason's point, go in selling a budget that is $500,000 over budget for Halifax plus a nearly 4% increase is going to be a little tough sell that, that town elections. When that happens, if they deny it, that's going to force a cut in the town budget. Biggest place where that town budget, that cut in town budget is going to be is out of the elementary school. If I got $100,000, $600,000, just speaking off the top of my head, it's probably about 10,000. So I could be wrong, but I think someone's going to pay for it, so someone's going to pay for it. Mr. Anderson can tell me if I got that wrong, if I'm speaking incorrectly, but I think, as I understand it, that's true. So I'm just, when we vote for this, as we already voted, you know, basically the share expenses is sponsored, but when we vote this, there's a big string of good likely that's there. Why about that? So the numbers that you stated, or what I stated last month is, continue to look at the budget, not a half a million dollars short right now, plus $200,000. But the only place to make major changes is the elementary school. So that's the difference.
If you don't mind, I just, some of your folks were here last, our last meeting. I've been sitting on school committees for close to 18, 20 years now, to be honest with you. I was saying this to Gordon earlier, my stomach is turning, my stomach is sick with this discussion. I have never been so torn between trying to do, trying to strongly consider what would be right for my town versus what is not an unreasonable budget. It's a trimmed, tight budget, it's very reasonable. 3.74 is high, but I don't see anything that's really a luxury in it. And I am sitting here, I'm being brutally honest, with my stomach turning because two towns are going to pass this budget most likely because it's not a bad budget, it's a reasonable budget. But our town is going to struggle with it tremendously. That's Halifax's problem. I'm not saying this is the Silver Lake problem, I completely understand, that's a, that's a revenue situation in Halifax, and we need to, I don't know what the answer is, if anybody had the answer, we've been sitting here in this discussion. I've never toyed with the idea of not supporting a budget. I mean, it's, it's, we have to do what's right for Silver Lake, somehow balanced against the towns, and I'm sitting here with my stomach turning. Jason.
So just as a part of entry procedure, I did make a motion, if anybody was...
I was seconded, that's why I raised that.
We've been having as much discussion as we want, I just wanted to make sure we didn't lose the motion.
We've got 3.74 was your, and we get seconded.
Do we need to mention the actual dollar amount if we do it?
I do have, I'm waiting to fill out my sheet. I have all the vote language.
I'll remind the committee, we have to have a two-thirds vote to pass the budget.
By weighted votes, not by individual numbers.
Any further discussion?
I just, I said this last time we were here too, but I would be very uncomfortable cutting anything beyond what we've already got because we'll be back here next year scraping to get down again, and I feel like if we just continue to do this, we're just slowly letting our programs grow, and I don't think that that's going to afford in the long term the kind of quality education that's drawn people to want to live in this town, the reason that, I mean, in the neighborhood I live in, it's almost entirely educators, like people who, who love education live in this town, we have, our principals have their kids in this town, and I think we're in danger of maybe not, I mean, we're talking about the fallout of music being cut 10 years ago, and it's hitting us now, so yes, this might take longer, but these cuts have long-term impacts, and I get that it's hard for some towns to afford this, and I'm sympathetic to them, but I think we would be doing a disservice to all of our towns if we did not vote the budget as it is here.
Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, but the other help that may be coming to the towns is the reimbursements from the state that they hired this year for us, regional transportation, all of that.
So again, the only version of the budget that's out so far is our one, which was very generous, but, but yesterday I contributed to testimony that MASC provided with the President Andrew Watts, who are the executive director of Columbia, who's asking for full funding of the circuit breaker, which we definitely anticipate, since President of the Senate still hasn't been there, we have had full funding of the circuit breaker as well. She's a former student member herself, very invested in special mental health. We did advocate for full funding of regional transportation, again. You know, we're asking for $100 per pupil minimum, and the governor gave us $30. The chances of us getting that $100, I can't guarantee that, it's never happened with the town of the high schools. You know, we are being helped by the additional warrants implementation of the School Activity Act, as much as some other towns and cities in particular. Yes, I anticipate a sudden, a few more dollars of students when we get to the final joint, you know, conference committee budget, but I can't guarantee, I can't guarantee nothing to guarantee. What I can say is, I know our students and them through the tremendous, the tremendous situation over the past two years, you know, a lot of our families have, a lot of us, and just the idea of not supporting the 3.74 and taking away from those kids, at the time, maybe they're experiencing academically, socially, emotionally, I can't do less than 3.74, but I also don't think I can do more.
So one of the things that, speaking of the things that we're talking about, music, can make sure that we have at the very fundamental, can make sure that we have, you know, that we have certain programs and constructs that are up in the later levels. Do you suppose Halifax is going to cut if they have to come up with between 5 and 10 positions? So it's going to be, I mean, a lot of our committee, I don't know, I don't know that anybody's talked about it, I mean, the principals talked about it, I don't know if anybody's looked at it, but almost certainly it's going to be administration, gym, music, art, ancillary things like that. So the net effect being that at least for a somewhat substantial portion of the population to begin, the types of things that we're grappling with are going to become reality for them. And I'm not saying that, I mean, I get where the problems, but that is reality. So you can project that if you have, you know, behavior or other things that are more likely to develop because of the absence of the programs and the 3.74 and things like that, that is a potential downfall.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I appreciate all, all of that, I really do, and it just pains me to pit one town against two other towns. It just, it's not in the spirit of the whole concept of regional education. There's supposed to be one unit at this level, and it just pains me, and I don't think that's any of the reason, I mean, the way everybody thought it was going to play out, and it's played out like this for the five years I've been on, the four years I've been here, and it's, I would love to come up with a solution for it, and I commend the Chairwoman's leadership and with, or not that, but here who's leading me, that, you know, that you've got those tri-time meetings going to talk about a lot of things that I think are useful for solving some of these problems, not necessarily the structural problems of the town in particular, but I think we're making some progress on a lot of things related to the three towns, and it just pains me to pit one town against the other two, and so I just apologize for that, but I, and with Jason, I'm going to support this budget.
If there's no further discussion, I'm going to call for a vote. In this vote, we won't have a budget if Halifax doesn't, at least one of us goes, assuming others are in favor.
One each time, is that correct? Almost two-thirds, or just two-thirds, first two-thirds, not a third.
Yeah, two-thirds of the, some ten members of the local parties.
Or half of the commission.
Okay.
Once we vote this received, if it passes, we'll do the...
The official motion, yeah, the official language.
Right.
Well, I have the budget, I have a capital, I don't have a capital plan, so they're both, they, they were talking about...
She's saying it's two-thirds of the committee, not the president.
Not the president. Yeah, that's part of the struggle because...
So before we vote, I'll warn the fairies of what's in front of the votes, I can vote for this until I can see what the net effect in Halifax would be in the sense of what, you know, the same losses are likely to, so I don't think, so we have this lot of buildings, we have a regional lot with different scenarios, which is fantastic, and yeah, the script was correct, and I don't think we have a scenario planned based on if we have to lose between the four and 10 big ones. So tell us of that. Gordon, just say that it's like you guys would be about $200,000. Yeah, so I'm picking that as four, as the low one, and ten is two, because you got a factor of...
Right, fifty, yeah.
Mr. Anderson, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know if we have actually a scenario planned, it says if we have to go for people, it's four, management assistance, I don't know, so we'll see. I don't have the answers to that, because that's really the difficult financing issue of the budget. I would suggest that it's going to be very difficult at Halifax, but this committee needs the vote, and you have to move forward because you're going to meet deadlines within the regional, and the net effect will not be for Halifax, this committee has to move forward.
Okay, any further discussion?
I just wanted to get a five-minute break, since this is almost, and I've been working doing some promotion, some work here, some brand now, getting there, I'm just running numbers here and stuff, so, it is, I'm considering, because I was asking a couple minutes.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute break, which usually seems to take about eight o'clock.
The coconut gives you a, puts you in a different place, huh?
Oh, Jamaica, ooh.
Yes, what happened when I record, like, I was at the concert the other night, where does that recording come?
It just goes into every Google archive, if you want to talk.
Because we, it makes the instrumental sound, see that?
All right, thank you, guys, it's, it was a difficult discussion. There's one thing I'll say about this group of people, very intelligent debate, very good ideas, feedback, and extremely respectful, and I think we can all teach that amongst ourselves. Thank you. Jason?
I thank you for the leadership through the central experience, and sitting in that position, especially during budget time, and I just want to reiterate that the 3.74% of the way that we would authorize it, and this is the way statutory, it goes anyways, is we vote the bottom line number, and the superintendent and her administrative team can determine how to best use those funds. I also have official motions to make, just for the record for the town meetings. Madam Chair, I make a motion that the Silver Lake Regional School Committee approve the 2022-2023 operation budget of $28,266,441 as the amount needed necessary for the operation of the regional schools in the Silver Lake District for the 2022-2023 fiscal year.
All those in favor? Opposed?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the Silver Lake Regional School Committee approve the use of $599,363 of E and D funds to fund the 2022-2023 fiscal year capital plan.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Madam Chair, I make a... Madam Chair, I make a motion that the Silver Lake Regional School Committee approve the 2022-2023 construction budget of $1,487,171.38 as the amount deemed necessary for the construction cost of the regional schools in the Silver Lake District for the 2022-2023 fiscal year. Is that right?
All those in favor?
We don't have to vote the assessment method because we use the statutory method, correct?
We do not have to, but it's, it works in our favor that there are no questions. With some other communities had some issues with the method.
All right, one more motion, Madam Chair, I apologize. I make a motion to accept the assessments as presented, assessments as determined using regional agreement. The regional agreement identifies the statutory method as the method used to compute the assessment.
All those in favor? Excellent. Registries, any business folks? Old business? School start time, second year, present day? Reports of special committees, Silver Lake Educational Association.
Hi, Ashley Farrar, vice president at the high school, English teacher at the high school. I appreciate the time and effort that you guys just took and how difficult the budget discussion was tonight. Really is every year. Just to circle back to the very beginning in terms of like CTE enrollment, I can only speak to like what I've heard my students say, but some of my freshman English students, girls, they apply or they say they've been applying because of allied health. But after they go through all of the shops, a bunch of mine signed up for welding and got it. And they were so excited and they were like, well, like I know I'm going to follow the science path no matter what, but like I like that I'm going to have a life skill too. And like, I really haven't heard that discussion before in terms of CTE. So I just think the tide is changing generally with how that's going. And they understand that like they can follow one path and find a life skill too with us. So I think that speaks to like some of the reasons for the changes in enrollment levels. That's it. Thank you.
My name is Ashley. Administrative review. Oh, Gordon, sorry.
I'm sorry, I should have mentioned this. The school start times, just going to make a real clear thing as a note to carry forward as something else to discuss. The seven quarters just passed, the daylight savings, you know, some might reservation, whatever you call it. I think there's a fairly good chance that there would be enough tide in Congress to go with that. I'd read some data recently that suggested that the better idea would have been to go standard time, not daylight savings time. And there are really negative health effects that come from that fact. They cited West Coast people, blah, 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 blah. But I say that because that might actually lend more urgency to the school start time discussion. So all I want to plug in for is keep an eye on that.
Like to chime in on what Gordon just said, because the latest sunrise, if this passes, would be 8/13 in the morning in December. The Massachusetts legislatures are taking note of what's happening down in DC. And it has spurred their conversation about school start time at the state level. That's not to say we shouldn't discuss it locally, but again, the same way, take it out of our hands if it's.
And then leave that out of our hands. It's what we figure out how it is. So.
Subject to work.
School start, it's something we handed to us.
Right, that's the one.
Yeah.
I've got two more meetings.
Thank you. That's actually very important to point out. Administrative review, we have not had a meeting since we met last. We have one coming up though. Yes, yeah. CTE.
We have no meeting, but I intend to reach out to the council members of the committee. So please be pleased.
Thank you. Chairman's report, correspondence, you both, the correspondence I have from the parent that spoke earlier. And I already finished sharing with everybody, so. Legislative agents' report.
So just looking at the constant erosion of our Chapter 70 funds to our charter school tuitions. I looked into the statutes under MGL of exactly how we can communicate to our students who have gone to charter schools. As many of you know, we regularly will receive mailers from charter schools soliciting our children. Well, in Chapter 71, Section 89, Part G, second paragraph, there's an interesting statement where we have the same latitude to reach out to our students who go to charter schools. So I just wanted to read it out loud to you and suggest that potentially we commission our administration over the summer, you know, when they have some extra time, to maybe put together a pamphlet flyer that we can send out. It says, "At the request of the school district from which a Commonwealth charter school enrolls students, the charter school shall provide to a third-party mailing house the addresses for all students currently enrolled in the Commonwealth Charter School from the district provided. However, that information shall not be provided if the student, parent, or guardian requests. The school will hold that specific information. Each district shall be permitted to supply and mailing to the third-party mailing house and pay for it to be copied and mailed to families of students from said district enrolled in Commonwealth charter schools." So we do have the same latitude that they have by statute of MGL. I just, my suggestions, we encourage the administration to pursue that potentially and send out a mailer describing our wonderful CTE program, the offerings of our high school, you know, the wellness and the social learning that's occurring at the middle school and how it brings our three towns together and makes them not Kingston, Halifax, and Plington kids, but Lakers, you know, and even our elementary schools and show what we have to offer. It's. The second piece of information, because I've already pretty much covered all of my legislative agent report for this evening, is I'd like to ask you for authorization to send a resolution to MASCE. And the intent of that resolution would be to ask for the establishment of a regional schools assessment stabilization fund. Back in 2016, there was a wide, wide walk pass called the Municipal Modernization Act. And I really feel like the regional schools assessment stabilization fund could have been part of that. And I've been using the language from that statute, which is MGL, Chapter 218. And this is the idea behind the regional assessment stabilization fund. So basically, if a municipality's assessment was under 2.5%, that town would have the ability to take their assessment and add up to the amount of dollars that would equal 2.5% and put it into a stabilization fund. In a year where a town's assessment is over 3.5%, they would have the ability to draw from that fund to bring their assessment down to as low as 2.5%. This would not be something that the school committee would have any purview over. This would be established by the municipality's legislature, which is town meeting. It would be authorized for disbursement and for savings by that same body as well. So this would all be governed by town meeting. It wouldn't be us playing with anybody's money. It would be the town having the ability, for example, Plinton this year having a negative 7.3%. We could put $100,000 into that stabilization fund. So some year, when Silver Lake comes up with a very reasonable budget of a 2.4% of that assessment in Plinton's a 6.8, we could draw from that to make it more palatable and manageable for towns. So instead of this hills and valleys of assessments, we have a more stable trajectory of a 2.4% increase year over year. I am looking hopefully to add some language in that we have some sort of incentive from the state for monies put in, maybe a five or 10%, you know, matched to any dollars the town's put in to incentivize the towns to contribute. I'm not very hopeful that I'll get that to pass. Remember, regional schools in the legislature made up, make up about 31% of the votes in the legislature. So if we're taking money, it's going to be harder to pass. But just getting the authorization to have this kind of vehicle for the individual towns to manage these hills and valleys, I think makes a lot of sense. What I'm looking for tonight, and I can send this out, I have it written up, but it's on my phone right now. I'm very formal. I can send it out to you all. It might get crafted by MASCE before it goes for vote anyways, but I would like to be able to say that we sent MASCE instead of the we, instead of the ten, yes. Thank your support for this resolution.
Do you need to vote? Yeah, I'll make that motion.
All seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Negotiations, no, nothing to report. There's a meeting coming up in a couple weeks.
Okay, let's see, they're, they've been undergoing the treasures evaluation, which they do every year. On March 15th, they kicked off their 2023 to 2027 strategic plan. Their enrollment is about 100 students right now, which is about five students less than they did have in December. They are having some staffing issues, so they put a pause on new enrollment because they wanted to make sure they had enough staff to service the kids. And like a lot of sectors in the world right now, they're starting from some big issues. We just kicked off a professional staff contracts negotiation for the next three years. That will include teachers and therapists.
Thank you. Policy, we have not had a policy for revolving funds. We have not had a meeting, Safe Ber.
I'm telling you, just that if I, we proved the $599,000 capital plan, it might have gotten amazing. So that's all we've got. We still have the articles going to town education, which is a stabilization fund establishment and that's. Probably the one new thing, only a mention here, is we are including the capital plan, $30,000 to do add in to the year again. Several years ago, we're going to do it again and try and see if we can find that. See if there's a solution that we can actually take better than what we had last year. Or did we still build a new, and get that.
Does the committee have a copy of the capital plan? Can I send you a safe word, pass it back? Can we send out to everybody?
Sure, digital?
Yeah. Because we really should, oh, I just, they should have copies of it so they can see the details.
Go for some details if you want.
Do you mind? Because they should understand what we voted.
Yeah, okay, so.
Hand these down to people that's.
Here, they're mine.
So this probably 2018, this means that, um, two providers, one of those. There's $20,000, one increase in, um, type of building. It is the middle school, high school, and lower care, which most of you are probably very familiar with. That's $200,000, that's a 10-year project plan. $200,000 per year, so it's very, 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 uh, going through. We're doing the HVAC study, which again, it shouldn't be a surprise. This is going to figure out the entire scope and design or nothing due to the HVAC project, which is funded through the power from three towns. We've already got their buying, use those funds to fund the HVAC project. What leads you to the HVAC stuff is going to do that in the 2023, 2023 capital plan. We've also already got the company to agree to do the plan for the liberating. So I'm working on it now, and the bill is available for the next fiscal year. It's all going on in change day as well. We have a CTE pickup truck. This is an old one from 1998. It is not for its life. About 15 grand, air compression CTE for 13 yen change. And we had two landscaping engines, a ground master mower, our $36,000, and a Kogga 57. I believe the Kogga is the one they've been borrowing from CTEs who have it on themselves. Oil machines in CTE also, any kind of CNC machine for 17. And then, this is where we change this. Remove the firewall and are adding in ADA compliant modifications to Sierra.
And remove the HVAC study.
Yeah, we need to assess it.
Because we're going to pay for that.
The ADA on Sierra, it's the rights, it's down the middle, the grants, and access from that point. That's going to help our capital study and all of our civil fields to, 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 finally get that done.
So we review and approve languages on the stabilization fund next meeting? For the war?
I don't believe our purview to, right, we need to coordinate with our leader and let your councilmen have the same and purpose of giving it out correctly. It's really their part, not ours. And sort of a little more in our space, giving the numbers, which are probably still, but again.
Yeah, I just want to make sure. Just want to make sure it's got a handle, because oftentimes, it's very, very, very confusing.
Just to clarify, the stabilization we're talking about for the town of Warren is for capital improvements. And this year's article would just be to establish a stabilization fund, not a fund.
It should already be that, but it stopped there.
Thanks, Chris. Yep, treasures report?
There is no treasures report, but I will report under single signature warrants. Let me get that.
You need to go to one, don't be a. Chris.
Thank you. As you know, when our meeting was postponed from last week, I didn't want the warrants to have to wait another week because we have utilities. We have other commitments in there that we just can't delay. So we sent them out electronically to our group that's on the Signal Signature Warrant Committee. And we sent out 22 accounts payable warrants totaling $1,8,285.93. Three payroll warrants totaling $2,626,821.19 for a total of $3,634,368.12. Thank you.
All right, and before we vote to go into executive session, next school committee meeting for Silver Lake, April 7th, that would be the school choice hearing as well. Good Friday, April 15th, and then spring break, April 18th through 22nd. Wow, all right.
First one for next meeting. I was looking, you can send me one on what grade they're looking like, high level. I don't know if it's capable or negative would be more appropriate, but in comparison to years past, I'm wondering how students, what student retention is looking like in terms of. I know last year, we were very hesitant to hold students back in a grade level because of COVID. And I'm wondering now, like, if you look at 2018, 19, 20, 21, what trends are we seeing and are students being moved forward? I don't know, phrase it, but I just wonder the numbers, I guess.
We have graduation rates through the state. Our guidance department may not have actual retention, what would constitute retention at the high school level. They may have students who are on course to have enough credits to be considered whatever their next juniors or seniors, but that's typically not till later. They may have data from the past year, but I don't know if they'd be ready for this year.
No, I mean, we could provide a breakdown of passing grades versus non-passing grades by term for the last couple of years or even by semester. Is that what you're looking for?
I'm just interested to see like where, what it's looking like now in comparison to years prior to COVID and seeing if we're seeing the same or if.
Yeah, we shared something, we shared something similar last year to compare 2019. Yeah, we shared something, we shared something similar last year to compare 2019, 2020, and then where we were last year, but I think that was a breakdown of our term and semester grades here at the high school.
I don't know exactly what is, I think you get the gist, I'm just trying to see like over the last couple of years, pre-COVID and then now, like, I get nervous that I know there's a, there wasn't, you know, last year certainly, I know there was not really the gist in our district, just globally speaking, a push for not having students available because of COVID, and I just get nervous that as a society, we're, and as we count these conversations, continuing to move students along to maintain what their peers, but what is that looking like in terms of, I don't know, is that, are they moving along at a higher rate than they were pre-COVID, in which case are students being moving that shouldn't be moving, or I don't know, just so ponder that? We can discuss it next meeting.
I think too, the structure of support team, they might have an understanding of a number of students that they may be concerned about, but they may not be ready to give an exact number because there's still so much.
This year to the term.
Yeah. And that's like, I don't know if people or they or when it is, we're just kind of thinking forward in the next couple meetings, I guess. I'm trying to think about that data and looking at what trends we're seeing or not seeing.
Trends in attendance too, and what that affects. So you see, obviously, you're still seeing significant effects of student attendance being impacted, but so now, obviously, but more so throughout beginning of this year.
Is, I have a question to come out like, is, I think we need to talk about final sand waiting or something at some point? Would that be next meeting?
That'll be on the next meeting agenda. We had an instructional leadership team meeting yesterday to discuss. Yep, so the instructional leadership team met yesterday on that same topic, so the next step will be kind of working with our teacher representative, so we'll have that for our next meeting.
You approve of that, right?
What's that?
You approve of that, one, two, three, change it?
Any change, yep, yep.
So if somebody would motion to the public session executive, and then we make it back out to public for a vote.
Okay. I make a motion to enter to executive session, to assume to MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, apply with our act under the authority of any general specific law for approval of this executive session minutes of 1:13:22, we intend to return to regular session for adjournment and for adjournment and a vote.
All those in favor? You got that right? Never. You want to go?